Good morning, everyone. It is 10:00 a.m. and we are ready to begin our fourth and final day of budget hearings for Harris County's fiscal year 2026. And before we begin, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Director Ramos and his team again for putting these meetings together, as well as Administrator Dickerman and Lucinda and Tiffany on our team, the Universal Services folks for keeping the technology running, our fantastic deputies for keeping us all safe, and most importantly, court offices for your participation and thoughtful questions. So with that, we want to welcome our first department for the morning, that is Harris County Resources for Children and Adults. A reminder on the format for today, so each department will be given three minutes for an introductory presentation, then each court office will be allocated five minutes for questions, and then Director, you'll have two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you.
When you're ready.
Good morning. Joel Levine, Harris County Resources for Children and Adults. Thank you, members of the court offices, for allowing me to speak today. And first, let's start on a positive note, in that we just recently opened our Hay Center Campus for Youth and Young Adults Aging Out of Foster Care and Former Foster Youth with the 50 apartments. This was been in the planning for over 10 years, and just thank the county collaboration when we all worked together. This was effort between housing and community development, engineering, purchasing, economic opportunity, even the public library that has a library in the apartment. So thank you to all the county departments in support, course O M B and O C A for their help with the Hay Center Campus. Looking at, looking ahead, we are addressing several legislative changes. One, of course, with a community-based care that will shift the management and administration of certain foster care services from Department of Family Protective Services to the DePelchin Children's Center that will serve as the single-source continuing contractor to set up the network for this region. And they will go live this spring, and we have been working very closely with DePelchin as we'll be probably the primary partner in the delivery of these services. And then House Bill 3186 from the 88th Legislative Session that was effective this past January 1st, that is about diversion strategies for Class C fight-only tickets in municipal and justice courts. And with our Justice Peace Corps Case Management Program, we are responsible for implementing House Bill 3186, and we've already served over 86 family youth in these diversion strategies. And we did receive our budget offsets, and we are, do have a plan for how we're going to address those offsets that we presented to our Harris County Resource Children and Adults, our Child Welfare Board this past Thursday. And that will involve shifting some of our guardianship case management positions to our Guardianship Special Revenue Fund. It will involve elimination of the clothing vouchers, as well as elimination of my executive assistant position that is currently vacant. We do have some service enhancements that are critical, and though we were not looking at service enhancements, I understand, in this budget round, we are going to look at potentially, okay, additional offsets that to cover some of these enhancements. And that will involve, of course, the House Bill, uh, coordination, diversion coordinator for the House Bill 3186. It will involve with our Preparatory Adult Living Program, with cuts to the federal transition living budget, and also with rollout community-based care, as well as a psychologist for the clinic and a teacher for the emergency shelter. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Each court office will now have five minutes for questions, beginning with Precinct 3.
Oh, hello, Lawrence.
Hello. Thank you for being here with us today, and thank you for the work that you and your office do. Just quickly wanted to know, how would the hiring freeze affect your operations and current level of service?
It will have a very deep effect on our operations, and I'm concerned about that. I don't have too much information about what that will look like yet. I know there's been discussion about it and what positions, because, as you know, we are a direct service, client service department. So all but about 2 million of our budget is all in personnel. And so, for example, if we have turnover in our guardianship program with, and that's a program where because of the stress of the work, because of the nature, because you're dealing with wards who, you are the guardian for them, you are, you are completely responsible for their physical health, their mental health, their housing, and right now, when we're fully staffed in that program, the caseload is 29. Ideally, we need to have a caseload of 20. The National Guardianship Association actually recommends 14. We feel we can do, 20 is the size that we need to be able to deliver the personal service we need, the attention that each one of our incapacitated wards needs. So 29 is already a challenge. We have to freeze as, and then we go up to 30, 31, 32, that becomes almost unmanageable. And also, it's a public program, so the public standards, where if we get to 40 on the caseload, we have to report that to that state office of county administration. So that's just example of one program where the hiring freeze would have that kind of impact. You look at, you look at our youth programs, of course, the shelter, we have to maintain minimal standards. We have very challenging youth in the shelter, so we go above minimum standards. So if we had to freeze there, we would have to rely on probably bring in our relief staff, our temp staff to help cover. Of course, our work in the school districts, that's contractual with the school districts as a funding partnership, so that would not only impact our contracts, but the services to the students. We probably would have to start having waitlist. So it's, it will have a real effect, because we are a client-facing department.
Thank you. I reserve my time.
Thank you, Precinct 3. Precinct 4, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Good morning, Joel. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate the work that you do. I've had the privilege of getting to know the board members, attending the board meetings, so very much new to our work in our community. Following up on positions and retention issues, how many employees benefited from the $20 minimum wage increase and the $2,500 incentive?
Oh, I don't have that specific number offhand. We can get that to you. It was a significant number of employees, because pretty much all our case managers across guardianship, across either Justice Assessment Center, Community Youth Services, Justice and Peace Corps case managers, they're all pretty much under 75,000. So I will say it was a significant part of the agency, but I don't have the exact number. I'll have to get that from my human resources director.
And do you think that has helped retention? Or is it too soon to?
I think it's too soon. I think you do have, one thing we have to realize, and I was gonna, you know, this'll, I always say this in my closing every year, is that our department historically has been one of the lower paid departments for our department head and down in terms of the salary administration plan, the salary structure, and they see that other departments pay more, and so that's impacted us. So we're really hopeful that the equity study, once that is, the results are in for the equity study, and Commissioners Court does make some determinations about how they're going to proceed, that our department will be one of the first departments that will be addressed.
Okay. Thank you. You mentioned temp staff. How often you guys use temp agencies?
Well, we, it's mostly in our two 24-hour programs that we use temp staff, and that's, it depends on turnover again, the time it takes to fill positions. It depends, sometimes in the shelter, if we have a situation, we have to go one-on-one or one-on-two because of the specific youth. But we use it for the shelter, we use it for our 24-hour juvenile diversion intake that we do at the Youth Services Center, where we're the department responsible for receiving youth 10 to 17 conducting need of supervision from the 50-plus law enforcement agencies in Harris County. And so we do use that for our 24-hour programs where we need to make sure we have personnel available. We also have used temp staff just for our group programs in terms of facilitators.
Thank you. Can you give us an update on the foundation and how the funds raised by the foundation help fund programming or anything at the department?
Yes, we, and we have actually several nonprofits, but the Harris Resources Foundation that started back in 1987 is, was a foundation to help support the work of Harris County Resources for Children and Adults, who was started when, before we became a county department in 95, when we were a Harris County Child Welfare Board Agency. And we have not had a significant fundraiser, so we're still utilizing funds from fundraisers we had in 2016 and 2018. We are in the process of planning a fundraiser in November, and then hopefully a fundraiser next year, because we do have some new energy, working with that board, some new, and they are, but we did successfully use the funds, as we have in past summers, to fund summer programming for our Community Youth Services Program in the school districts. We used it for our Positive Youth Development Program, for their leadership weekends and their, and, you know, things like, we always, during every legislative session, we wanted to take youth to Austin for youth, the statewide Youth in Action Day, so they could learn about the legislature and how that works, and, and we were able to take 19 students to Austin, rent a bus, feed them, spend the day. So we use it for activities like that. We also have been using it for employee wellness, because that's, especially with our retention, employee wellness is a very important to our culture, and we're gonna have, every year we try to have a major employee wellness event, it'll be October 30th this year, and the foundation board pays for that. So we don't, because we, that's something we can use our general fund for, of course.
Okay. Thank you. I yield my time. Thank you, Precinct 4. County Judges' Office, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Good morning. Madeline Steck from the County Judges' Office. Following up on that line of thought, could you provide a brief overview of the different funding sources beyond your foundation that your department utilizes each year?
Well, of course, we have our general fund, then we do have grants, mostly from Department and Family Protective Services and Health and United Services Commission. We also have several federal grants from SAMSA in our youth services area, and Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention that helped us bring our KIIS program back to A-leaf. Now, we do have funds from, as I said, we set up not only our Harris Resources Foundation in 1997, when we formed our Be a Resource CPS Kids Program. We formed that as, with, along with a community group that was setting up a nonprofit for, and so we, that's become a public-private partnership, where the county provides the staff and the infrastructure for the Bear Program, but the foundation raises the money for all the goods and services that we use for the Bear Program. And the Hay Center, where we established that in 2005, we recognized after the federal funding went away, that in order to maintain this program, we need the state funding that we get through grants, the county funding was not going to be enough to meet the needs of this population. So we set up a 51(c)(3) in 2015, the Hay Center Foundation, and so they help the staff, or all staff of Harris County. And we support, the Hay Center Foundation does support some of our activities at the Hay Center, they help raise money for the campus, and they support some of our activities, such as our academic coaching program and the residential treatment centers, some of the, some of the funding for our summer employment program for the youth, that our college tours, the Hay Center Foundation does support things like that.
Thank you.
And then, of course, our community services program has that funding partnership with the school districts. So we try to, we need every penny of general fund and more, but we do try to leverage what we have, and we, we have a good history of that, and we really worked on that.
Thank you. And are any of those grants or funding sources ones that you consider to be at risk this year?
Uh, yes. And what I can tell you is that, number one, we're very worried about our, our big federal SAMSA grant that provides student support services and, and Sheldon, Channelview in Spring, they took, they defunded the TNTA grant and the evaluation grant, but they didn't, fortunately, we're still good, and the Federal Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency. But, you know, our state grants, especially for the Preparation for Adult Living Program, is federal CHAFEE pass-through dollars, Federal John H. CHAFEE Foster Care Act from the 90s. And with that grant, we have lost significant funding, and that's what we're struggling with right now, which is what I said, we're gonna have to probably take some additional offsets to cover that, because, just to give you an example, in '23, '24, we were cut by $83,904 in our allocation, and just last week, we were cut another $20,000 in our '25, '26 allocation. And CHAFEE, the state, according to Department of Family Protective Services, the reason for these statewide cuts, it went to all providers across the state, not just does, is because CHAFEE bases your allocation on the number of children in foster care. And though the number of children coming into foster care is going down, the children in, who are in foster care are staying longer, there's displaying more challenging behaviors, and we're not seeing any reduction in the number of youth aging out. We still have about 200 aging out a year, and just to give you an example, in '23, '24, we had 115 what they call life skills assessments required to do at 14 and 15 years old, and then we trained 296 16- and 17-year-olds in the Preparation for Adult Living Life Skills Modules. And last year, that number went up to 345 that we trained and 154 assessments. So our numbers are still going up, even though the federal CHAFEE dollars, based on their formula, is going down. So that's an area that we're gonna have to cover.
Sounds like it's gonna be a challenging year. Thank you.
Thank you, County Judges' Office. Precinct 1, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Thank you, Director Levine, and we are so grateful for your service, and congratulations on opening the Hay Center, which was so honored that is in Precinct 1. I'd like to get back to discussing some of the staff cuts that you'll have to make. Is it correct that you all will have to cut 22 positions, 12 which are filled and 10 which are vacant, to address the county's deficit?
Well, that's when we had to offer $3.2 million in offsets, which is 10% of our budget, so a little over 3.2, yet we did have that number that you, that's, would have been the consequence.
Great. And so, just to follow up on that, you talked about the impact that that would have to the guardianship program, but can you also talk about how that would impact mental health services and also the clinical services that you offer to youth?
Well, right now, given where the offsets are right now, what's being accepted, it won't have as devastating effect as it would have had if we had to give all that back. Because if we had to give all that back, we would have had to reduce, we would have had to eliminate our Saturday clinic hours, would have had to reduce the hours of psychiatry, as well as our clinic hours in general. We would have had to reduce the contract hours of certain providers or eliminate them. It would have created waiting list, it would have created times we had to close the waiting list, or it'd increase the time of access to services. And so, and it could have potentially meant that we could not fulfill some of our contracts with the Community Youth Services in the school districts, because we had even put some of our vacant KIIS positions on that offset list, which would have been going back to a school district and saying, "We can't fulfill our obligation to you." So right now, with where it is right now, and knock on wood, that's where it's going to stay. to stay, is that we will have to cut two filled and one vacant positions that, as I said, will move into the Guardianship of Special Revenue, and the vacant executive assistant, but we'll also have to cut clothing vouchers.
So can you talk to us about what your department's priorities would have been if there was an opportunity to trade additional offsets to fund critical service needs identified in the service enhancement request?
Absolutely. And that's, as I already talked about Preparation Adult Living and the need for life skills training and case management at the Hays Center. We also need, in terms, I talked about House Bill 3186, which is about diversion strategies, and this bill from the 80th legislative session was about the need to create diversion strategies for fine-only youth offenses in justice and municipal courts. It was really about being able to bring, uh, status, uh, the rights of youth to diversion or alternatives, instead of just having to pay a fine in these courts, and the way they would have had more opportunity if they committed a higher level of offenses. So we have, we are responsible for referrals from law enforcement, from the school districts for these, and we have to then develop a diversion strategy, our Justice Court Case Manager, with each of these referrals. We've already had 86 just since January, when this law went into effect. And so with that, we need a coordinator to really oversee this work, because this is work our JP Court staff is doing on top of the dockets, they have to work in the Justice of the Peace Courts. And so this coordinator will help us manage this rising volume and the complexity of the referrals. They will help us coordinate with the Justice Court and stakeholders, ensure our compliance with the statutory requirements of House Bill 3186, help us to engage more directly with families, and also develop our procedures and protocols for how we're going to roll out House Bill 3186, and of course, collect and analyze performance data. So we really need to have that diversion coordinator to come with, House Bill 3186 and our Justice of the Peace Court program. And we also need, of course, we, our shelter, we do schooling in the shelter, we use the juvenile probation, uh, school to do that, and juvenile probation has informed us, they cannot cover the cost of the full-time teacher we have in the shelter this year. So of course, we have to have funding for the teacher for the shelter, because we have to educate the youth.
Thank you. Thank you, Precinct One.
Position, but, okay.
Precinct Two, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Hi, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to you and your team at the Harris County Resources for Children and Adults for all the very critical work you guys do. My first question was, I wanted to know how you guys went about proposing the offsets internally?
Well, as you know, this was a very, very difficult process for us, because, as you know, we are, as I said again, we are a client-facing department, and so all but little over $2 million is all personnel. So there was, there's, there was no way of doing it without touching personnel. And so we had to look at what is the least impact, what is the minimal disruption to services? And that's where we came up with things like, take my executive assistant. You know, I liked, I liked to have an executive assistant, but we felt that we have, we able to divide up some of those resources, some of that role, we had people in place that could fill in if we moved things around, and it was better to do that than to take away a direct service staff. The clothing vouchers, the other big ticket item, $450,000, is, this is something, as a child welfare board, we have done historically, but, and it has really been appreciated by the foster caregivers, who, many of them do not have a lot of the resources they need to be able to care for the children in their care, because they have, these children have very high maintenance. And even though it's not a lot, $33,133, $13 a quarter, depending on the age of the child, it meant a lot to the assist, to them, and also the judges were very much in support of it, and sometimes they even ordered them when there was an emergency move. But they, you know, we felt that foster parents do get a per diem, and they do, they can use a per diem, and also, we do have the BARE program, and we do have what's called child-related expenses for emergencies. So we felt there were some, still opportunities of foster parent really needed help. So we really looked at that first, but it was, how can we not pull any direct service positions? But we really sweated it out. The one thing, I know I talked to some of your offices about, we really were concerned about, was putting our guardian, our asset management team on the list for our guardianship program, because, and we really felt we had to save that at all costs, because if we didn't do that, not only were we going to ask case managers with a caseload of already 29, and also the case met, and also with 29, but also above their skill level, outside of their skill set, to do things like have to sell cars and houses, because when we get a ward in, because we're indigent program, we have, we have to do an inventory, and if there's any real property, we have to sell it. And that money goes into the wards, counts then. So we have a team that knows how to do inventories, knows how to do, set up bank accounts, find old bank accounts, and so we could not, that would have put the whole program at risk if we lost that team.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, while some of the proposed cuts are in areas you flagged as high priority, could reevaluating your budget and making transfers help address these impacts?
Uh, yes, as I said, we are going to do that, but we're going to do that to, for these critical service enhancements that we're not, because we're not seeing any enhancements coming from Commissioners Court, though we're always open if they're going to reconsider that. But, so we're going to have to reprioritize to meet these enhancements I've been discussing, in terms of the diversion coordinator, the psychologist for the clinic, the teacher for the school, and in terms of Preparation Adult Living Program life skills. So we're going to have to really comb through to figure out how we can meet these four critical need areas.
Okay, and then my final question is, what key metrics do you use to assess how RCA is fulfilling its mission to empower children, youth, families, and vulnerable adults?
We have a very robust, uh, performance development improvement program. Part of it, you know, we're accredited by the Council on Accreditation, uh, international accrediting body. So we're required every year to have all our, our outputs, our outcomes. We do quarterly dashboards, reports, which are six pages long of, across all our 19 programs with, where we can see red, yellow, green, what's, what needs immediate attention, what you need to watch, where our outcomes are going where we say they are. So, no, we do have a very robust continuous quality improvement program through our performance built improvement team, and we also have to comply with all the standards of the Council on Accreditation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Precinct Two. We will now cycle back for any remaining time. Precinct Three, you have two minutes and 13 seconds remaining.
No further questions. I'll yield my time to Precinct Four.
Thank you.
Precinct Four, then you have two minutes and 16 seconds remaining.
Just one clarification question. So as of today, the budget offsets will only cut two vacant positions and the executive assistant position?
Well, it'll cut, yeah, well, two vac, two filled, one vacant, that in the guardianship, that they're going to move to the special revenue, and then the vacant executive assistant position.
So three in total?
Yeah, I think that's four.
Four, okay.
Three in guardianship, one in executive assistant.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Precinct Four. No other office had any time remaining, and so with that, Director, you will have two minutes for closing remarks.
Uh, first of all, we did get the answer to your question. 279 employees of our 400 received that 2,500. So that's, that was a high number.
Thank you.
And, no, in closing, I just want to say thank you for all your support. I really, you know, we visited all your offices this summer, we met with many of you, and we really appreciate your support. We provide very valuable services for the vulnerable children, youth of, adults of Harris County. We have 19 programs across the lifespan. Sometimes I know where people see us as the best-kept secret, we're working very hard to get the word out there on all our services at no cost to the citizens and to meet the needs of the vulnerable children and adults. We're constantly trying to be innovative in that. But, and as I said, I always say at the end, and I already, I know we already brought it up, but, you know, we have really worked very hard on our culture in our department, on building a positive culture. I think we've come a long way over the past nine-plus years. I have been department head, I've been with the department over 27 years, but little over nine now is department head. But we are one of the lowest-paid departments, and so we really do have a lot of faith in the equity study that it will see that, and that, hopefully that'll help us with our recruitment and retention then. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director, and thank you to the entire Harris County Resources for Children and Adults Department. Our next presentation will be from the Veterans Services Department.
Thank you.
Good morning, and welcome to the Veterans Services Department. A reminder on the format, Director, you will have three minutes for introductory remarks, then each court office will be allocated five minutes for questions, and then you'll have two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. I'm Dave Lewis, the Executive Director of Harris County Veterans Services Department. This is Jason Williams, our Deputy Director, well-known to most members of the court here. Our mission in Veterans Services is to improve the quality of life for Harris County veterans and their families, and I'm really honored to work for the 29 hard-working and dedicated and passionate members of our VSD team. 29 members, 16 of which are general fund, 13 of which are grant-funded, and we have intentionally and strategically leveraged our general fund positions with a million and a half, $1.5 million in grants, to address the needs of veterans who might otherwise fall through the cracks. I want to talk about our four service lines and what we do. The first is statutory, it's claims and benefits for veterans and their family members, always free of charge. This year to date, our claims team has filed over 4,300 claims for veterans and family members, and we've also included monthly events in Precinct One, Three, and Four, and over 60 total events across the county, in a goal to make sure we're meeting the veterans where they are, not getting, forcing them to come down to our location. Our other three service lines, we fill in the gaps. When I say that, there are certain things that the VA cannot or will not be able to do, and so there's a lot of gaps, especially for veterans in need. First is our Emergency Financial Assistance Grant from the Texas Veterans Commission. We help over 200 veterans and family members every year with utilities and rent predominantly, and we've successfully prevented a number of evictions and utility shut-offs through that program. I want to spend some time talking about our Suicide Prevention Program. We have a grant from the federal government, VA. Suicide prevention for us is job one. Veterans make up 3% of the Harris County population, but 11% of the suicides. We still lose a veteran to suicide every six days in Harris County, and let me put that into context. Since 9/11, we've lost nearly 7,000 brothers and sisters in arms in combat-related fatalities. During that same period, we've lost 156,000 veterans to suicide. That's nationwide. We work closely with IFS, the VA, and the Houston Area Suicide Prevention Council. We're an integral part of a newly-formed Suicide Mortality Review Committee. We're one of only two counties in the country to have the VA Staff Sergeant Fox Suicide Prevention Grant. And finally, let me talk a little bit about veterans in the justice system. This is also a complex issue, and we know that accumulated trauma over a lifetime, including military service, plays a significant role in veteran incarceration. We believe nearly 3,000 veterans pass through the Harris County Jail each year, and we're in the process of bringing better fidelity to these data, thanks to our partnership with OCA and Tanya's team. In the past year, we created 910 reentry plans, executed 160 of those upon inmate release. Recidivism stands at 15% for that population. We work very closely, and I'm almost done, with the Harris County Sheriff's Office, the Harris County, the two Veteran Treatment Courts, and our case manager, supervisor, and staff attorney have worked with numerous judges, court coordinators, and third parties to bring workable solutions for veterans and their family. We're saving jail bed days and ensuring positive justice outcomes. We're integrated with the core insert teams via the iPad programs to bring cultural competency and next-day solutions for veterans struggling in our community. And at that, I'll be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Director. Each court office will now have five minutes for questions, beginning with Precinct Four.
Good morning, Director. Thank you for being here, and thank you for the work that your department does. I wanted to start off by asking, how much of your budget is funding direct services versus operational costs?
So, we really have to break that down based on how much of our grant. We, we are not like a mental health provider. What we do is we, we coordinate mostly, we bring parties that can provide those. So almost everything we do is focused on engaging, finding the veteran clients, getting them to the position they are. We do have, uh, social workers and other licensed people on staff, but we're not providing a lot of, uh, direct services, if that helps answer your question. So almost everything we do is based on finding, assessing, and getting them to the right point.
And then, would any of the funding cuts affect that collaboration or referrals that your team does?
It would significantly affect that, and, and we have talked about this at length. What we've done is leveraged with a county-funded leadership position and then grant-funded workers underneath that county-funded. If we were to have to take the 10% budget cut, we would likely look at our claims and benefits team, which would, which would be difficult, which stretches out the line for people to get their claims and benefits in a timely manner, and will also stretch out or reduce the amount of total dollars that come into Harris County from an economic perspective.
Thank you. And out of the 16 positions that are general funded, how many benefited from the $20 minimum wage or the 2,500 incentive?
Yeah, 10 of the 16 benefited from that $2,500 piece, and so I don't believe we had anybody that was making under $20 an hour. We had some that were right close to that, but 10 received that 2,500, much appreciated.
Thank you. I yield my time. Thank you, Precinct Four. County Judges' Office, you will now have five minutes for questions. Ear mic, please.
There we go. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Director, for being here today and for the important work that you do. I first want to ask if, do you anticipate any impacts to grant-funded positions or programs in 2026?
It's an interesting question. We, we were nervous about our VA's Suicide Prevention Grant. The new VA Secretary has put a high priority on suicide prevention. So we look, we believe, we have not received the final paperwork, but everything we've seen lines up. We believe we'll be able to continue that grant over the next year. That's nine positions for our department, and it would be significant if we lost that. On the Texas Veterans Commission side, we've been blessed to receive several good grants. We've been renewed for both of those grants for this next fiscal year, so we don't see anything. And then, as a side note, we do have a Veterans Legal Services Grant in there to augment our staff attorney that you all graciously funded for us last year. There is a legal services grant program funded by the VA, which would allow us to bring on a couple additional members for our legal services team to work legal issues in support of homeless veterans, and you'll notice that was absent from our portfolio. We don't spend a lot of time there. However, there's a giant nexus between justice-involved veterans, they were homeless when they went into the jail. If they're in there for 45 days, by definition, they're no longer homeless because they've been stably housed, but they come out homeless, and so working those legal services will be important. So we're hopeful in the next few days, we'll find out if we get that. hopeful in the next few days we'll find out if we get that grant as well.
Great. Thank you. And what services provided by your department are in high demand by county residents? And is your department meeting this demand?
Claims and benefits, four-thousand-three-hundred of them. And you'll notice I said one, three, and four, because Precinct Two has their own claims and benefits and veterans program. So, that is constantly in high demand for us. They work their tails off. We get literally thousands of phone calls every year, people that don't know where to start. So, high demand there. Suicide prevention is high demand, but it's a difficult process because we have to go find the veterans. Typically, they're isolated. They are not. Even though the VA has great programs, they will not represent at the VA. The VA will tell you seventy percent of veteran suicides have not been seen in the VA healthcare system. So, we've got to go find them. We know based on the numbers, there's a high number of need, high numbers of veterans in need. So, we've tailored a lot of our programs to try to reach what we call the eyes, the close-in family members, the close-in friends, to be able to get us to the, to the veteran that's in need. So, we see high demand across all of ours. Homeless, I wish we had the resources to get more involved in the homeless veteran population.
Yeah, thank you. And so, several of the enhancements that your department submitted included funding for a veteran's small business, development officers, and staffing enhancements to support crisis intervention and prevention services. Could you please share more about the rationale behind these enhancement requests and what challenges you may face without these services?
Absolutely. And if you all remember, a couple months ago, we had a lengthy discussion about the small business position for, for veterans to be able to get in and contract. We've asked for that position. We've asked for it three out of the last five years, well, four out of the last five years now, to be able to do that. Without that funded position, we just don't have the bandwidth. Now, there's some good news. Maybe a year from now, if Texas Veterans Commission identified the need, we might be able to get some grant funding to bring that on. Other than that, we know with the high demand for veteran claims, we asked for two additional claims officers. You know, I'll throw out there, we bring in about ten million dollars per claims officer, ten million dollars of revenue, not, not into the county coffers, but, you know, economic impact into the county. And then the last thing we asked for, based on the VA potential for staff cutbacks, is Veterans Justice Outreach positions to help us in our Veteran Treatment Courts. We are barely skimming the surface. As I said, almost three-thousand go through the Harris County Jail every year. We put about forty per year into our Veteran Treatment Courts. We're just barely skimming the surface there. And there's, there's a lot. Also, that's our highest suicide rate currently in the county are people that are in a specialty court, and it shouldn't be that way. So, we've asked for enhancements in that area as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, County Judge's Office. Precinct One, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Thank you, Director. You all have several statutory requirements, but you go above and beyond this. And one example is your work with those three-thousand justice-involved veterans. So, is it correct that you will have to reduce two of those veteran justice coordinator positions with these cuts?
It would be an option, either that or, we do not have a, we have two county-funded positions, a case manager supervisor and our staff attorney. It would be devastating to our program to cut those two. So, really what we've said is, out of our six-person claims team, we'd have to cut two people there instead. So, but that would almost bring that to a standstill.
Just to be clear, there are no recommended cuts of the Veteran Services Department.
Thank you.
Okay. So, can you talk about your continual pursuit of justice-involved veterans in the docket? We understand that you have a staff attorney and a small team that helps you carry out this work. What other supports are needed to address the growing population of veterans in the jail?
So, we've looked at a six-pronged approach to taking care of this. Better upstream intercepts, which is really important. That's why we're involved with the COR and the CERT teams. We'd like to see a veteran before they go to jail, rather than having to fish them out of the county jail. We just recently discovered, our numbers do not include misdemeanors that never spend a day. They come through the JPC but never go into the jail themselves. And so, we got our staff attorney. That staff attorney does not defend people, even though, if you're familiar with brothers in arms in the jail, they would love for her to come defend them in court. That's not her job. She puts grease on the wheels of justice, is the way I say that, works with the judges, provides alternatives. For example, if somebody's being held in jail for a DDRP slot, and we can find a slot, and we've taken them as far as Temple and Waco to get into a veterans treatment place that is sufficient to the court member, then that, that works. We have to work on better reentry. And I know that's a big thing across the entire county. But if we can catch them when they come out, we've got a good reentry plan, and we know how to execute that, get them to the resources that they need. And then our, our three-pronged approach to the justice side, better diversion opportunities, identifying veterans as they come in. So, better diversion opportunities, high-risk, high-needs in the treatment courts themselves. And then we believe a docket similar to the RIC docket would be a model for how we could, might be able to handle other veterans within the justice system. A lot of moving parts to do that, and a lot of, a lot of interested parties to try to be able to work our way through. But we are, we've already seen the results, and we're saving, we're saving jail bed days and getting the right outcomes.
Thank you. No further questions at this time.
Thank you, Precinct One. Precinct Two, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Well, Colonel Lewis, thanks so much for your work. Commissioner Garcia definitely wants me to pass along. He's very appreciative of the work that you do for the county, Precinct Two, and all veterans. Me as a veteran myself, I definitely want to offer my thanks as well. Pretty much all of my questions have been answered. I'm not a big believer in just talking for no reason. So, I have one final question. Can you describe some core KPIs that your department is looking at for the next upcoming fiscal year?
Yeah. So, so really, when I, when I look at that, we look at leading indicators and lagging indicators. How much demand for service do we have? And then what outcomes do we get? We pay careful attention to the, to the suicide, the suicide rates. We actually track, via courtesy of IFS, we track every suicide in Harris County, and then call out the veteran suicides. So, we're very cognizant of that particular thing, because that's where we think we'll make the, the biggest difference. The surge in demand, as you're familiar, and thank you for your service, with the PACT Act, caused a lot of surge in demand for claims and benefits from veterans that were not previously being served. So, so we're very cognizant of that. And then, just, I tell people, we turn over rocks for a living, and, and we find a lot of stuff interesting in the jail. I always say it's not a get-out-of-jail-free card just because you served in the United States military, but you still have it within you, for the most part, to be able to get back up on step. And so, that's where we can do that, provide culturally competent resources to probably get them back up on step. So, so we're watching how many veterans go through the jail. We're watching the suicide rates. We're watching demand for claims and benefits. And then we always have a list or a long line out the door for our Emergency Financial Assistance Grant, quite frankly, so.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And like I said, most of the questions have been answered, but I will allow you to speak upon what else, what else you would like to share, I guess, for the remainder of my three minutes, because I have no further questions.
Well, we're in this business for all the right reasons. And, and I think we don't want people to get lost through the cracks. We have a wonderful VA system. We work very closely with them. But as you're probably familiar with, sometimes it's easier to use side doors into the VA than, you know, a veteran that goes down to a Michael E. DeBakey wonderful hospital. First of all, you're going to spend an hour trying to figure out how you're going to park there, because there just isn't any parking resources. And then once you get in the door, the challenge is on how you're going to get enrolled, eligible, that kind of stuff. So, we spend a lot of our time connecting people through side-door entries, if you will. But that's an important partnership. Obviously, they have tremendous resources. We do not. But we work very closely with them, their suicide prevention coordinators, with their mental health team. The chief of their mental health team recently referred a very difficult veteran case to us because the VA didn't have the resources. So, we scratch our head and go, I guess we'll figure this out. So, we always tell everybody, we're a one-start shop. If you're not sure where to start with a veteran issue, family member, friend, whatever, start with us. So, we're proud of that work.
Thanks so much, Colonel. Really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Precinct Two. Precinct Three, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Good morning, Director. Thank you to you and your department for all the work that you do, protecting those who sacrifice so much to protect us. I mean, that's super impactful. You know, Commissioner Ramsey is very impressed with the work that you all do as well. I just wanted to hear more about your work, or Veteran Services work with CERT, and the impact that you have seen from that.
Yeah. So, this is really important, because we, we formed that relationship a long time ago. And so, what we've tried to do is to position ourselves not to be the crisis responders. We have plenty of that in Harris County. What we've tried to position ourselves is, what's the next day look like? So, we get to somebody that's in crisis. I say "we," collectively, the county, the COR and the CERT teams get to somebody that's in crisis. And then we are on their iPad program. We have a separate room in there, and they can connect to somebody twenty-four-seven. And, and we say, okay, let's, let's talk about what the next day looks like. So, we've got the crisis de-escalated. We're not going to go to jail. We're probably not going to go emergency detention of some sort. So, what does the next few days look like? And that's where we can then unpack the basic needs that they may have, what's going on, what grant programs are eligible for. And so, that has worked very well. Seventeen different law enforcement agencies that we work with through that program. We have looked at, we have not connected fully yet with the HART program. We look forward to being able to do that as well. But COR and CERT are working, are working well for us. Now, having said that, we only take about one, maybe two, calls a week from them, but those are important calls when you've got somebody that's not quite sure what, what it looks like and where the services are. And that's, that's our expertise. So, thank you for that question.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Precinct Three. We will now cycle back for any remaining time. Precinct Four, you had two minutes and fifty-eight seconds remaining. Precinct Four. Thank you. County Judge's Office, you had twenty seconds remaining.
No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Precinct One, you had two minutes and fifteen seconds remaining.
Yes. I would like to circle back to some of the work that you do to help veterans who are experiencing homelessness or, or are housing insecure. You mentioned rental assistance, but I'm also curious to know if you coordinate with any other departments, like the Housing Department, or even our Housing Authority on some vouchers?
We, we do work closely with vouchers, and mostly for veterans. The VA has a great voucher program. So, a HUD-VAS voucher is very much a valued piece. We were born from formerly CSD and housing, and community development now. So, we do have the connections in there, and we're, we're still tied in electronically with, with our data tracking system and the way we that we cut checks. We have made an intentional decision not to, not to spread ourselves too thin because of all the resources that have been provided through all the various fundings, ARPA funds, et cetera. We anticipate that that challenge may go up for ourselves within the county, and we may have to relook some of those programs.
No further questions, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Precinct One. Precinct Two, you had one minute and fifty-one seconds remaining.
No further questions. Thanks for your service again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Precinct Two. Precinct Three, you had three minutes and twelve seconds remaining.
No further questions.
Thank you. With that, Director, you'll have two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you. And, and I appreciate you guys letting me off a little easy today. I love to come and talk about our programs. In particular, I want to thank Director Ramos, his staff and his team, all the court members, all the offices who support us. And sometimes it's an overlooked, but a very critical mission, and we're one of the few counties in the country that has really taken aggressive piece to this. And that pays big dividends in our community when we do that. These are veterans that got through boot camp, got through basic training, and they still have it within them. We get them the resources, get them back up on step, and they're productive members of our society. In a little over five years since our creation, we've grown the department from three employees to twenty-nine, and I'm proud of that. We work on behalf of the largest veteran population in the state of Texas. Eleven percent of the veterans live here in our county. That's roughly the size of the Marine Corps. We have the third-largest population of veterans in the country, and for comparison's sake, our closest peer would be Los Angeles County. By the way, their budget is twenty-three million dollars for their Veterans Department. Just thought I'd throw that out. But bottom line here is, for what we do with our grant leveraging and, and the gracious funds that you all in the Budget Department have provided to us, we believe we provide significant value to our county. So, thank you very much for your time and questions.
Thank you, Director, and thank you to the entire Veteran Services Department. Our next presentation will be from the Housing and Community Development Department. Welcome back. As we continue our budget hearings for the morning, we want to welcome the Housing and Community Development Department. Director, as a reminder of the format for today, you'll have three minutes for introductory remarks. Then each court office will have five minutes for questions, and then you'll have two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you. Good morning. Tal Costas, Executive Director of Housing and Community Development. And I'd like to actually introduce my support team, wonderful team here. Our CFO, Craig Atkins, our Chief Program Officer, Tori Gensali, and Director of Policy and Partnerships, Amanda Rocha. So, Housing and Community Development, our mission is to invest in, provide the resources that come to us through federal and other resources into repairing and building infrastructure, single-family homes, multifamily homes, repairing them, as well as provide public services that our community needs, especially our low- and moderate-income households. Our strategies are in line with what the county's strategies are. We want to tackle housing affordability. We want to end homelessness. We want to provide the support and the connections and resources our community needs in order to thrive during sunny days and after those disastrous moments. So, we go about that by building a team with an organizational culture and structure that can support it with the right expertise and the skills and the infrastructure in order to sustain our long-term programs. And that's the thing about our work with infrastructure and housing. It is not immediate. It is long-term. So, we need to invest today for the future. Regarding our budget, this fiscal year '26, we are planning for a budget that is over two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollars. Most of that is through our federal funds, HUD, disaster recovery. We are still in the midst of finishing out D.R. Harvey, which we anticipate will happen in February of 2026. We are in the throes of deploying our ARPA dollars related to the housing portfolio. And, of course, we are utilizing and maximizing the impact of our general fund dollars. General funds, we are anticipating a twenty-point-nine-million-dollar budget from general funds. So, doing the math, that makes up seven percent of that two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-million-dollar total budget. So, general funds is a small, but very important, part of our big budget. Within that twenty-point-nine-million-dollar general fund budget, more than eight million of it is actually dollars that are going out to directly serve our community. More than two million is going to bereavement services. These are burial services that the county These are burial services that the county is legislatively obligated to support. My time's up?
Thank you, Director.
You get the gist.
Each court office will now be allocated five minutes for questions, beginning with the County Judges' Office.
Good morning. Madeline Steck from the County Judges' Office. Um, I wanted to start by thanking you. HCD had really thoughtful, um, budget proposals this year. And on that note, I would love it if you could walk us through your service enhancement request for the Housing Trust Fund and how, if approved, that could have helped advance strategic planning goals.
Yes. We did make a big request for a $5 million investment in creating a Housing Trust Fund. This would be an instrument that gives us flexible funds to, in order to invest in the building of multifamily properties, providing gap funding, because as we know, in today's market, the capital dollars are difficult to come by. Interest rates are high. Developers are finding it very difficult to make the math work. Housing affordability is a crisis, not just throughout the nation, but right here in our backyard. Our residents are not able to maintain their homes. They are suffering and, and being evicted at a rate that is, we're at the number two or three in the nation, which is not acceptable. So this Housing Trust Fund is an opportunity for us to declare to the community that we have a commitment to housing affordability, to our residents, to the working class who need to get to work easily and, and investment in our community, e- economy. It's also an opportunity for us to say to our private sector that their dollars can be maximized and leveraged with our own investments. And this is a tool that can be, uh, a loan, so it can be replenished for future uses.
Thank you. And you had mentioned a comparison of Harris County to other regions. Do you have a sense of how our general fund investment in, in HCD compares to other peer counties' housing departments?
You know, I do not know that, but we can look that up and find out.
I think that could be some, some good framing for us next year.
Good to know.
Um, I think my last question for now, if a more senior staff member happens to leave this year, do you expect to have the budget capacity to pay for their final benefits like PTO?
Yes, I think we should be okay. Um, you know, our department has really tried to scrutinize our operations, the use of our dollars for program support. Um, so at the end of the day, only 4% of our budget, our big budget, is utilizing general fund dollars for these program supports. But it is a, uh, critical element that funds people like this team here, people who are experts in the housing field, in the infrastructure field, in the government dollar field that we need in order to maintain our operations.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll reserve the rest of my time.
Thank you, County Judges' Office. Precinct One, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Thank you, Director. Um, can we talk a little bit about some of our long-term strategic housing goals? And what are your strategic priorities for the upcoming year? I really appreciate the question about the Housing Trust Fund, uh, which is a really um, big missed opportunity for us this year, but can you talk about those priorities for the next year and how does your proposed budget for next year support those priorities?
Yes. So our, our goals, our strategic goals for this next year is uh, very much in line with what we are core competency and focuses. And it is about long-term housing affordability. We are working to build flexible funds, like the Housing Trust Fund. We have a big goal to increase the inventory of housing, period. And that is what is needed throughout our community. Um, house, single-family homes and multifamily homes are both critical resources and assets that our community needs. So using DR funds is really how, and ARPA funds is really how we have been able to make major infusions these last few years. And the concern for us in the future is that federal funds may be reduced significantly. When ARPA funds are done, we're done. Um, can we create program income, regenerate some of these dollars that we are putting into our programming so that we can reinvest dollars for more single-family homes in the future or other, uh, multifamily investments? So those are where the big dollars are being invested. Our general funds is helping us with creating some of the planning and the infrastructure in order to support these big, uh, financial, uh, requirements and infusion. But yeah, actually, you know, one of the questions earlier, uh, in another conversation around the budget is if we could utilize the savings that our department's fine, has found, how would we do that? And it would be putting it into a Housing Trust Fund. It would be putting it into some of these programs that are strategically aligned with what we're all trying to do. Build more housing, whether it's multifamily or single-family, and create more inventory.
Thank you. Can you speak to the efficiencies, consolidations, and office improvements that your department has made over the past few years to improve overall operations? And how did that impact your ability to make the 10% cuts this year?
Yes. When I started in 2023, we immediately began to assess our department for what is our role, what is the best capability that we have, and how do we go about doing it with the maximum impact, with the most limited resources? We know that our limit, our resources are limited. So from that year, so it's been two years now, we have made efficiency cuts. In fact, 50 general-funded positions have gone away over these last two years, making up a third of all of our general fund positions over these past two years. We have added some positions that we needed, where expertise was needed. Our Chief Program Officer, he has deep knowledge and expertise in housing that we didn't have. So we found ways to complement and create the team that can maximize the impact of our strategy. This last year, we looked at our budget again for more efficiencies and were able to achieve the 10% cut. Future years, it would be difficult because over these last few years, we've gone from a $24 million budget now down to less than 21. So for us to be able to keep making cuts, it would be cutting into direct services. So even again, with the 21 million, more than eight of it is direct service. It's going out the door. It is not within our department to hold.
Thank you.
Thank you, Precinct One. Precinct Two, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Good morning, Director Costas. Thank you for coming. Thank you for prepping and thank you for working always with Precinct Two. Um, and to answer the question everyone's already asked me, Francisco is not in the office this week. That is why I am his, his poor substitute here in the housing hearing. Um, he did generate questions for me though.
Of course.
So we've started to get a peek at the point-in-time count numbers that have come in for 2025. And with the budget that you're looking at for 2026, how will the county sustain the outreach and rehousing capacity to avoid any kind of public safety concerns with homelessness, especially in our floodways and our toll road corridors?
Right. Yes. One of the things that we avoided doing this with the 10% cut this year was really to stay away from any cuts to our direct assistance. We fund almost $4 million from general fund dollars into homeless services, and it is housing. It is paying for rents. It is paying for case management and the support that formerly chronically homeless people needed and still need. So we have a commitment to that strategy also, that priority of ending homelessness as quickly as possible. And we are working in tandem with our community, our Coalition for the Homeless, the city, and all of the different partners, philanthropy and the nonprofits, to be able to keep making progress in, in that area. And yes, the number of people that are out on the streets, how can we take that down? Not just within the city limits, but also in the outskirts of the far reaches of our county. So we are, have been working with flood control, our Universal Services Team, and others within our county to be much more deliberate, coordinated, and intentional so that we can target the areas that are needed, help people move effectively off those properties and into housing because we don't want to just move people from place to place. That is not the answer. The answer is housing. So how can we do that with the, the support that we have, the resources that we have, and, and the challenging areas that are a priority? So we are on that mission right now.
Fabulous. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Garcia sponsored an item this year addressing home title fraud uh, and how to prevent that in Harris County, especially since it seems to target seniors um, and immigrant families in particular. Does HCD have the resources it needs in the 26 budget to lead the development of this prevention and restoration policy? Um, and more importantly, the outreach that is going to be needed for the community to implement the policy?
So this is a true partnership effort. We are facilitating this with our other county, uh, partners and departments. And so Amanda Rocha is our Director of Policy and Partnerships, who's leading that effort very, very uh, seamlessly and, and meticulously. Um, and so at this point, uh, as long as we don't cut Amanda, uh, we will be okay. Uh, but yeah, so I know that other, uh, teams and other departments do need resources in order to, to support this initiative. And so this is something that we're all going to be wrestling with as we try to determine what's the most effective way, given the, the limitations that we have. But yes, this is an issue that is near and dear to us uh, because we don't want housing and people's homeownership to be lost and outside of their control.
Thank you. I'll stop for now with my 54 seconds. Thank you, Precinct Two. Precinct Three, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Good morning, Director Costas and team. Uh, thank you for the work that you guys do in the community. I'll keep it quick. I just want to hear more about the staffing model that you, y'all have adopted, um, I believe was three years ago? And kind of the impact that you've seen that have on your department?
Yes, thank you. So yes, the organizational structure and the culture that we are building and continue to build is something that is very important to all of us at, at the senior team level. We have been very meticulous about having people in the right seat, doing the right jobs, that people are paid appropriately and consistently throughout the strata of the organization. When I came, there were some misunderstandings and, and different, um, uh, levels of pay for similar work. So we've done multiple things from defining our culture, our values, and how we are going to show up every day, defining a pay structure that clearly outlines the steps based on jobs, job descriptions, roles, responsibilities, and experience, so that people know what to expect. And that when promotions are made, pay changes are made, it is clear and understood by everybody. So there's not a what about me? But it is, here is the structure and here's why. So we always want to start with why and clarify for people the reason so that they understand. So I know that, you know, when we passed the $20 minimum wage, this was something our department had already installed two years prior. So that was before me. I can't claim credit for that. I think that this department was already thoughtful about some of our staff and, and what they needed in order to be able to live. Um, the 2,500 increase recently was wonderful. And that benefited 90 of our 250 or so staff. So, so yes, pay, culture, having people in the right seats, doing the right jobs, and trusting them. And that, those are the things that are the fundamental pieces we put in place. And then we trust our people to do their job, but we also check. Check, but verify, right? Trust and verify. So we continue to tweak and we will continue to find, uh, look for efficiencies where they're, where we can. Um, and, and yes, change will continue to occur so that we can stay relevant, innovative, and keep doing better.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Precinct Three. Precinct Four, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Good morning, Director. Um, thank you for being here and thank you for the work that your team does. Um, in terms of housing, with some numbers that your team shared, just in fiscal year 2025, we've created 350 multifamily units. We have also, um, in terms of legal eviction, legal assistance, we have surpassed our target with 3,840 individuals being assisted. We are super grateful for that. With a budget that we have for fiscal year 2026, will be able to sustain this progress and this rate of success?
That is our hope and goal. And yes, I know one of the considerations that is on the table um, are ARPA fund cuts that may affect some of these, at least the rate uh, of these, uh, impacts to the number of people that are benefiting from our homeownership counseling and, and the legal assistance. Uh, the home repair is one area that, uh, we are, um, looking at as an, a place that could reduce some. Uh, but you know, this is also using a projection, uh, based on a maximum per household dollar. Perhaps we'll spend less than $60,000 per household, and therefore we can still help more than the number of people that we plan for. So we will find every way that we can to serve as many people as we can. Um, again, this is con, a constant battle for us. There's never enough resources to serve everybody. So how can we the mo, be the most judicious, be the most expedient, and efficient with our dollars to make the most impact?
Thank you. And following up on a question previously asked about staff, um, I know you guys recently had a leadership retreat. I, I love that. Um, what is your retention rate currently?
Um, I think when Sakita sent that out, I can't remember. It's less than 12%? Current vacancy is about 12%? So yeah, I think we hover somewhere around, you know, 10% vacancy to 12.
Okay, thank you. And, um, what are the key priorities or signature initiatives you'll be prioritizing in fiscal year 2026?
Well, one of the things, uh, one of the big projects that, uh, Tori is helping us to shepherd is this, uh, plan on housing affordability. So we are working with our city counterparts and, uh, philanthropy and, and others to uh, do some refreshing of data to understand where we stand as a community of housing inventory, housing needs, and what are the opportunities? Policy-wise, funding-wise, partnership-wise, that we can build and, and have a collective goal to achieve over the next five to 10 years.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. No more questions.
Thank you, Precinct Four. We will now cycle back for any remaining time. County Judges' Office, you had one minute and 47 seconds remaining.
Considering that 10 to 12% vacancy rate, do you have any concerns with the proposed hiring freeze?
We have spoken to our friends at the Budget Office, and we believe that we will be able to hopefully, um, hire the um hire the the position, fill the positions that we have. Now again, most of our budget is grant-funded positions. So we only have five vacancies that are general funded positions right now. Um, out of the almost 190 or so positions that we have that are general funded. So we are moving fast to fill those positions um so that we can absolutely keep our operations going um in anticipation of, again, D.R. Harvey is about to finish at the end of February. And I think one of the concerns that we have is that we will lose people. People who have great knowledge, expertise, and because we don't have the funds for them, we can't keep them. So we are working madly to capture desk audits or whatever that term is, desk manuals, uh policies, procedures, and all of these things so that we can institutionalize the knowledge. Um, because we know another disaster is in the future. So how do we stay um as as quick to respond and and not be caught off guard uh and not able to step up quickly so that we can move quickly? And that's always a challenge after a disaster.
Thank you. I think I'm out of time.
Thank you, County Judge's Office. Uh, Precinct One, you had 11 seconds remaining.
I have many more questions, but I will save them um since it'll be very difficult to ask or answer in 10 seconds. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Precinct One. Precinct Two, you had 54 seconds remaining.
Okay, very quickly, I heard you talk about um housing affordability. According to My Home is Here, Latino homeownership in Harris County is only 47%. Black homeownership is just 42% compared to 74% for white households. What targeted strategies will you guys do in 26 to try to help close that gap, especially for our hardworking Latino families in Precinct Two?
Yes, um, we are in the midst of finishing up an acreage development right now, again, with D.R. Harvey funds. And it, one of them is in Precinct Two. Uh, and so we will be definitely learning as we uh market specifically to this community in this area uh for people to be able to purchase uh homes at a discounted price here. So I think that that's one of the things that we know that Precinct One and Two are are ones that typically have the the population that we need to try to identify a different way to approach them. So we're looking at that.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Precinct Two. Precinct Three, you had two minutes and two seconds remaining.
No further questions. I'll yield to Precinct One.
Okay, uh, Precinct Four, you had one minute and 38 seconds remaining. Thank you, Precinct Four. And then Precinct One, then you have two minutes and two seconds remaining.
Thank you, Precinct Three. Um, Precinct Four talked about some of the ARPA impacts from the significant investments we've been able to make towards housing stability. The reality is we're having to cut ARPA, right? So if you could talk about what are some of those um impacts in terms of the number of homes that can't be repaired or homeowners who won't be able to receive legal assistance or clear their titles? That will be the result of having to make some of the ARPA cuts to cover the budget deficit.
Yes, uh, it is unfortunate. Um, we are looking at a $5 million total between the two programs. And so for the rehab or repair, this is a $3 million cut. Essentially, we would be reducing the number by almost two-thirds. So if we were to maximize the dollars before, we would have been able to help 66 households, again, at that $60,000 max per per home. Um, so now we're reducing it by 39 with a $3 million cut so that 27 households are going to be able to be served through this repair program. Again, if we have funds left over because uh these homes don't require the entire 60,000, that number could be higher. On the uh home counseling or the homeowner education and counseling, it's 970 people fewer. So we will be able to help 830, but that's more than half that we're having to reduce. And so education is one that we can do as a group. Um, and so that's why we're able to serve a higher number, but again, it will still be a sacrifice. And then on the legal, specific legal counseling, we will be able to help 148 fewer. So the total would have been 365, but 217 at the end of the day will be able to be helped.
Thank you. These are real impacts. We appreciate you sharing.
Thank you, Precinct One. Uh, that will conclude the court questions section. And with that, Director, you'll have two minutes for closing remarks.
I just want to express my appreciation for for our partnerships with all of the offices of court. We recognize that our future is tenuous as far as federal funds, disasters, it's it's unpredictable. And what our department attempts to do is to maximize every opportunity that we can. When Beryl occurred, we led the effort to bring those dollars back to our community to have the direct allocation to Harris County so that we can move quickly to serve our residents. So we are in motion to get that plan in place and move forward. We want to be prepared for the next disaster. And so we need the support of the general funds so that we can maintain and retain the skills, the knowledge, the experience of people that can help us deploy our resources at the ready. And again, it is a long-term strategy. Housing, infrastructure, these are all long-term needs and impacts. And so we look forward to you being our continued partner to make sure that at the end of the day, our county is thriving economically, socially, community, safety, all of that. It depends on housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Costas, and to the entire Housing and Community Development Department. At this time, we will take our morning break until 11:45 a.m., at which time we will resume with the Universal Services Department. Thank you.
That's why I say it's very good. I think everybody had 10.
Yeah, I think it was one of those. I think I'm about to tell.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning and welcome back. It is eleven forty-five A M. And we are ready to resume our budget hearings for the morning. And we'd like to welcome the Universal Services Department. As a reminder on the format, Director, you'll have two minutes, three minutes for opening remarks. Then each court office will have eight minutes for questions. And then you'll have two minutes for closing remarks.
Good morning, Commissioners, Court members and the team that's present here. I would like to start with saying thank you for the opportunity to present this budget on behalf of Universal Services. And I would like to thank your offices, O M B, O C A, the NTRIM County Administrator, and the other department heads, who have worked with us in bringing to, bringing us to a place where we can present this budget. The process was, I'll be very honest, the process was painful for us because we are a very lean department. And we support, our request for our support has just increased over the course of last several years. As an example, we have, our health test tickets have increased a percentage by around twenty percent every year. And the resources to support those requests are kind of lean for us. So with that, Universal Services, as you're aware, is one of the most complex departments within the county. We are spread across several divisions, which includes information technology, fleet, radio services, records management, and three, three-one-one. We provide direct mission critical support to county departments to various degrees, including not limited to law enforcement, justice, infrastructure department, court offices, and the residents of the Harris County. I want to start off with touching base a little bit on the internal services funds, which supports our fleet operations that manages more than five thousand of the county's fleets, and also is embarking us on the sustainable fleet path. Another internal services fund is our radio services fund, which supports not just the law enforcement within Harris County, but also several partners across the region. And they are most used around the disaster situations. Our general fund, moving on to our general fund, which is the topic of discussion today. Our general fund primarily supports our information technology services. Information technology, which includes both enterprise technology, as well as some of the department, key department technologies, innovations, record management, three-one-one services, and many such like contracts that support other departments which use technology. Some of our achievements from last, last year includes we successfully launched our security operation center, which will make us much stronger when it comes to both being proactive in it, in, in the cases of addressing some security risks. We also have launched our network operating system, center, which will help us be proactive when it comes to any network incidents and or, or incidents related to our applications or infrastructure. With the roll-off of automated invoicing process last year in partnership with O C A and departments, as well as with the Auditor's Department, we have been able to identify. Tracy, if I could use one minute of my closing remarks?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you for that. So in delay of invoice processing and the system in disintegration that existed before we were able to address that successfully. We have also rolled out, as you're aware, enterprise technology asset management program, which has already generated a saving of approximately two million for the county. We have, through our Office of Innovation, we have also rolled out drone policy, an umbrella drone policy. Thank you to the Commissioners, Court Offices, especially Precinct Two Commissioner, for the support that we received on that. And in the upcoming year, we do plan to strengthen our data infrastructure through building our data management program so that the generative A I and all these future oriented programs can be built on a strong backbone. So that is our general fund, just a quick introduction on achievements from our general fund. A few other items that I would like to bring to the focus is our general fund. The way we divide and use our general fund is in a very systematic fashion. We divide it into three buckets. One is keep the lights on, which is maintenance. Make sure that the things that are supposed to work are working. The, and the second one is enhance. The enhance implies the current capability, making it, for example, if a new feature is coming up, rolling out those features, that's enhancement. And the third aspect of it is moving the county forward, which implies any of the innovation. As an example, generative A I has become extremely high demand for us. So moving those kind of launching new projects, H R transformations, such things fall under our move the county forward initiative. So our general fund is generally used in these three manners. And it is divided into two parts, labor and non-labor. Non-labor is very much heavy concentration of our non-labor general fund is on contracts. We manage over two hundred and thirty-one contracts that are, that can be called enterprise with, and multiple smaller contracts for the county. So we also, as, as I mentioned earlier, we support public safety technology. We support such as card, R, CAD, R M S. Through the I G S team, we support the justice. And we have launched two initiatives. One of them is keeping our current J web environment stable and modernization journey, which we will be embarking over the course of next year and after. So that's kind of a very high level summary of our general fund. We also have I L A with Flood Control District, which helps us manage our services and provide the level of services expected by flood control. There are some M O U's in place as well, which helps us also provide those, those services requested specifically by certain departments.
Thank you, Director. With that, we'll begin our Commissioners' Court Questions segments, beginning with Precinct One. You will have eight minutes for questions.
Hello, thank you for everything you do. Thank you for being here today. So to begin, Universal Services does a lot to improve operational efficiency within the county. Really the backbone, making sure that the administrative, you know, everything that we do is just running as effectively, as efficiently as possible. Are there any proposed offsets in the current budget as proposed? What you expect will either delay or halt your department's ongoing efforts to improve operational efficiency and also disaster preparedness?
In all honesty, it will impact our operations to some extent. And I will, I'll be very specific. As I mentioned, our general fund is divided into these three categories, which is keep the lights on, enhance, and innovate. Those are the three categories that we divide our funds in. Maintain, we are doing our best effort to make sure that the maintenance efforts are not impacted because that's what keeps the county running today. Our enhancement efforts might be delayed, and innovation efforts definitely will be impacted. So that's on a very high level summary on how the, and then there is another one. As I mentioned, our contracts are he, we are very heavy on our contracts as far as general fund is concerned. So some of the vendors, we understand that they might be increasing their maintenance cost in the upcoming year from the various discussions. So we may have to come back to the Court requesting for an amendment in such a case if they present those increases to the contracts.
And is there any risk of these offsets count, costing the county more in the long run?
That's a difficult question for me to answer, especially because there is risk in every decision that we take, especially in the light of infrastructure that we have to manage and also stability of the application. There are applications that need to be modernized within our environment. So on the long run, we are trying to modernize that in a very systematic fashion through multiple ways. And if you are able to achieve that, the risk would be minimal. However, if you are not able to achieve that, the risk would exist.
All right. And are there any other funding mechanisms which can be adopted to support your operations?
Thank you for that question. I would lean on O M B to help us answer that question. But there are some funding models available, best practice funding models available in the industry that we could explore in collaboration with, with Director Ramos and his team.
We, we would like to get more into an internal service model where departments are essentially providing kind of a fee for service just to allow us to really, one, to incentivize departments to, to manage their requests internally. I think right now, Paul Cindy and I get bombarded with requests, you know, year-round. New systems, new integrations, new updates, new technology, where this really should be a more deliberate process where, as part of a C I P planning process. So we're not quite there yet. And, you know, in our system where, you know, public safety, which is the largest, you know, users of the fleet system and one of the largest users of technology system, when you put money in there, you can't dictate to them how it's used, and you can't get it out after. It, it may not be a model that we can adopt necessarily here, Harris County. But we are looking at that. And the idea is to just rationalize it so that departments have some skin in the game in terms of like not just throwing things at the wall and hoping they stick. Or there's, or where there's also cost controls on the universal services side, and there's a clear prioritization of what projects we take next.
All right, thank you. And if they proposed, you already touched on this to an extent, speaking of adjustments to like costs on contracts. If the proposed offsets are adopted, do you expect your department may need to come back later in this fiscal year with an additional budget request?
I would say if, if the contract scenario poses a need for us to come back, and some of the things that we have heard is there might be an increase in certain contracts by twelve percent or so. In such a case, we don't have that in our budget. So we will have to come back to the Court. And if there are new projects that are coming down the pipe, which will have an operational impact, in such a scenario, also, we will have to come back to the Court and request for additional funding.
Okay. Can you provide an overview of the vacant positions O M B is proposing to eliminate from Universal Services? And do you recommend the elimination of other vacancies instead of those positions? And that's separate from the vacant, the hiring freeze. But if you want to discuss that as well, obviously, that's relevant to this conversation.
Thank you for that question. We were asked to provide the vacancies within our, within our organization for about one point nine million. We worked with O M B team to identify those positions. Most of those positions are from our P M O offices. And yes, they would be an impact as a result of the projects that they manage. And we'll have to look at how do we address that. But most of those, we have worked with O M B in order to identify those key positions that might have the minimal impact. There would be some impact, however, that would be minimal.
And are there any positions which you, any positions which come to mind, which you would request be exempt from the hiring freeze?
I appreciate that question very much. As I mentioned earlier, we serve as a backbone for most of the county's technology operations. We support the county's technology operations, some form or fashion across the board. Some use our data, data center services, some use our network services, some use our infrastructure services, some use the entire. And then cybersecurity is the common layer across the board. So irrespective of whichever area you choose in terms of the resources, we are providing critical services across the board. So any cuts in any of those areas is going to impact us. And our goal is to at least maintain the operations and ensure that those critical enhancements are moving forward. Cybersecurity is top of mind. Justice and law enforcement is top of mind. Physical security is top of mind. And then there are some citizen-facing services such as three-one-one, where we have seen an increase in volume every time there is a disaster by about fifty percent. So those are critical services. I mean, it has been proven through data that those services are required during those emergency situation. Public safety radio, which is funded through a whole different mechanism, but it has general fund implications as well. So. So, um, uh, to, all this to say that any position that you look at will have an impact.
All right, thank you. I reserve my time.
Thank you, Precinct One. Precinct Two, you will now have eight minutes for questions.
Thank you. Hello, Dr. Menon, Director Menon. Thank you so much for the work that you do on behalf of Commissioner Garcia. I thank you for the complex work that you and your department do throughout the county. It's very, um, very complex. Um, first question is, how do you see the usage of generative AI solutions to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of county operations, including, uh, the budget in the coming years?
That's a, that's again, a complex question. The demand for AI has increased. As you have seen, um, in discussions during these budget hearings, there were several departments that did come up, especially, you know, engineering brought it up, um, Department of Engineering brought it up, uh, yesterday when they spoke about usage of generative AI during their, in their, to improve the efficiency of the permitting process. So there are efficient use cases that are being tested within our innovation office of innovation lab that would generate those savings. As an example, one of the use cases within the industry, we see that, um, it is used for, generative AI is used for contracts. Quite a bit into developing the contracts. Of course, there is a need for us to validate the information, et cetera. So we do see the usage of generative AI, developing those efficiencies within the, within the operations of the county. The rollout of generative AI will also depend upon, um, our partnerships with the department, your support, of course, and also the budget that we have. So it would have to be an extensive discussion with Office of Management and Budget and going back to the funding models that can be established for us to roll those solutions out.
Thank you so much for that answer. Um, next question, what are the top three opportunities where digital transformation of the county's operations? Sorry, excuse me, what are the top three opportunities where Commissioners Court can be supportive of digital transformation of the county's operations and make digital services easier to access for our residents?
Thank you for that question. So digital transformation, I think we are in the process of, um, embarking on that journey. We have embarked in certain areas while on the others, like for example, HR transformation comes to the top of mind. Our ERP transformational journey comes to the top of mind. So there are a few initiatives in the pipeline that's going to support. Cybersecurity continues to be the top most concern for us. So we do want to make sure that, and I've heard that from the Commissioners as well, through multiple discussions that we have had with your offices and with the Commissioners, that cybersecurity continues to be the top most demand, uh, or ask from us. So, um, I do not want to talk about centralization, but consolidation of a lot of those, uh, those practices would help. As in understanding each other's business and also making sure the change management protocols are followed. So, you know, we appreciate you all approving sixteen policies. We would like to embark on the journey to implement those sixteen policies. So your support would be needed in those, um, uh, those journey. So cybersecurity, uh, the policy implementation and also consolidation of those three contract, I mean, the contracts across and making it more enterprise rather than the individual way of operations.
Awesome, thank you so much. And one, uh, one final question for now. What the salary study due in October, have you been engaged in providing a review and information pertaining to competitive IT salaries?
We have participated in the meetings that we were asked to participate and we have provided the data. I'm, I'm not sure what level of participation would be expected from us. So we have participated in the, in the invites that we have received.
Thanks so much. I have no questions for now.
Thank you, Precinct Two. Precinct Three, you will now have eight minutes for questions.
Thank you, thank you for being here, seeing your team. Wanted to get into the weeds a little bit. So throughout the department hearings, we have been hearing, um, a lot of people saying that they're looking into new technology, new softwares and new avenues to leverage AI and different tools. So first, who's making the final call on these? So is it Universal Services that's deciding which softwares will be employed? Or are these departments coming to you after having done a trial run and saying that this is what they need?
It's both. Both of those scenarios do exist. We have a process in which we are working with a, a purchasing, um, department through which the technologies coming into the county are evaluated from a cyber and the risk perspective and a rollout plan is put in place. Some of the departments do a great job of working closely with us and ensuring that they follow the process, while there are some gaps in other areas. So our, our, the, the purpose of Office of Innovation is to help support building those use cases so that we can effectively and efficiently and safely roll out these AI solutions. So our goal is to work closely with all the departments and ensure that they can make use of these AI technology that they want to use. However, also we want to be careful about how we roll it out. As an example, there are, uh, there are, um, AI technologies that are, that haven't gone through a full risk assessment. And as a result of that, they pose a risk, if rolled out within the county, pose a risk to the county. So we do talk to the department and try to stop them. There are, um, some situations where we have some challenges, but otherwise mostly the departments work with us.
Um, so I noticed that across departments, the technology is very siloed. Do you guys have a, maybe a rough estimate of how many different software applications are being used across the county right now?
Around eight hundred.
That's eight with two zeros?
Eight with two zeros, yes.
Okay.
That's approximate. And we continue to onboard technology across the board on a regular basis, so that number varies.
Right, so ideally with your own plan for consolidation, um, is this more so just minimizing the number of applications? Or is there interest in potentially moving over to a ERP system that can handle all of this?
The, the, we are taking a very thoughtful approach on that. Uh, I'll give you a little bit of about ERP. There are systems that, um, are in place today. For example, um, we have contract lifecycle management system and, um, some other applications where we're working with our stakeholders through our IT governance board to build that logic around which can be, which can be, which applications can be a part of the ERP roadmap. Along with application rationalization. So as an example, uh, we worked last year successfully with multiple departments that are using monday.com. We had siloed approach on monday.com earlier, where each department was going and procuring their own instance of monday.com. We have centralized that now. Through that centralization effort, a saving of approximately fifty thousand was generated. It also helped us address some of the risks that the departments were inherently undertaking as a result of signing up for the things that were not vetted through the risk management process. So we are taking a very focused approach through our enterprise technology asset management program. We have now consolidated the model of laptops into three major ones. Yes, there are exception processes in place because we do understand there are some unique needs for maybe a fourth model. There might be a unique need for a different model. So we do accommodate those exception processes, but we want to minimize the number of exceptions. So our enterprise technology asset management program would be the centralized way of addressing these, um, these one-off requests that comes in. And if there is a way for us to standardize that into, uh, uh, you know, the accepted standards across the county.
And earlier you mentioned, um, that help desk, help desk tickets were around twenty percent. They had risen about twenty percent. I know it's hard to probably gauge where it's at, but would you say most of these are simple issues such as login issues or are they actually operational issues within the system?
It's both, it's both. And I, I would say that it's kind of the ratio, I don't have the ratio right now, um, uh, in front of me. But I would say that, um, the systems, as we all, as those who have worked with the technology do require support. There are times when, um, systems go down. Those are also one, uh, part of the ticket. We look at things from a problem management perspective also. If you have a lot of tickets that are coming as a result of one of the systems being down, we do take that effort as a separate effort in order to, um, address that. Our processes that we follow within our shop is called ITIL, which is Information Technology Infrastructure Library. And it's a best practice framework that we have in place. And we have adopted it since two years ago. I mean, we have strengthened that option of it since two years ago. So right now our tickets fall under all the three buckets, which is, you know, I have issues with login. It's a user challenge, you know, I don't know how to turn the computer on, for an example. Or my docking station is not working, those kind of tickets exist. Also, we have, you know, the system is not running. Can you take care of that? And some of them are also that, could you add, I have understood from the vendor that there's an additional feature. Could you add that additional feature to it? So it falls under all the three categories.
All right, thank you. I'll reserve rest of my time.
Thank you, Precinct Three. Precinct Four, you will now have eight minutes for questions.
Good morning, uh, well, good afternoon. We are now in the noon hour. Director Menon and your leadership team, thank you for being here today and for, uh, ensuring that always being responsive, um, especially to our requests, um, and, uh, being here today to answer our questions. To start, um, we understand that there's, uh, three funds specific that Universal Services, um, oversees. One, looking at our contract, um, or our agreements that may come out of that, as well as our utilities and leases budget. And so I do have a question about that. Can you share any captured opportunities for smart savings that have helped us to combat, uh, inflation in our usage and rate charges? I noticed only a two point three increase, um, from last year to this year for those. And so if you can share that with us?
Sure, our service, um, level, um, we have renegotiated service contracts, which has generated a saving of approximately three point one seven three. And, um, we have also consolidated some of our wireless utilities and landline utilities, which has generated a saving of approximately, um, eight point six, um, eight point six, not million, eight, but eight, eighty-six K. Eight hundred, eight hundred and sixty K, approximately around that. And then, um, the countywide efficiencies that we have, um, found through different ways, not just utilities, is about two point five on six.
Thank you. Universal Services is a key partner, um, with OCA and other departments in delivering on several, several of the county's strategic priorities and operational imperatives. We talked about some of those today, including efforts to modernize data and technology architecture across the county's legal system and cross-departmental initiatives like procure to pay, HR transformation and the five-year financial plan. Can you walk us through the department's high points and key learnings over the past year from this work?
Sure, we have, I mean, those are, um, I think the three projects that, um, we have, we have completed more than forty-eight projects in the last year and we are, we have sixty-nine active projects that are happening. So the key learnings around that, we have now, since last year, uh, we have, um, formalized our project management office. We follow a very systematic process that helps us, uh, not just make sure the stakeholder is in agreement with the project moving forward. And we are also following the Commissioners Court Directive in an accurate fashion, ensuring that everyone is on the same page. Ensuring we are putting in the resources in an accurate fashion and also, uh, moving the project to the closure. Initially, when, two years ago, the projects were being handled as an operational initiative, as in they would go from year to year to year to year with no clear closure timeline. So through the formalization of our project management office and the business analysis function, we have now, um, framed the projects to have a clear start date and a clear end date. If it is a project that we do not believe would be completed within a year of, uh, year, we have adopted an agile methodology and also, uh, put in smaller phases of the projects in play, in place. For example, our three one one is the best example for that. Three one one is a project that has, uh, moved from year to year as we bring the departments into the fold and integration with some of the key systems that help three one one transfer the tickets from one system to another. We broke it down into phases so we could approach and get some, um, so get real tangible outputs out of it. The ROI calculation has now become, um, a part of the project planning process. So through those processes, um, I think that has helped us significantly. Some of the lessons learned is again, uh, decentralization continues to be a challenge for us. So that is another one of those aspects where we would be looking at the court offices to help us address those challenges.
Thank you. An additional question, uh, according, or this is about staffing. We understand, and thank you for the question, uh, Precinct One, relating to the types of positions that you may be seeking any exemptions if there is a hiring freeze that's adopted. We, and we would like that specific information, so working with OMB, we appreciate that, um, being proactive there. Can you please advise, um, we understand that there's been significant vacancies and, um, there's been challenges facing the department to recruit and retain talent. Can you advise of the top three challenges, uh, to, uh, your staffing and how the department has worked to address the year-over-year vacancies?
Thank you for that question. The top three reasons why we have a turnover in our department. And, um, before I start there, I would say that, uh, industry turnover for a technology department. And because we're talking general fund and because we're talking technology here, uh, the industry average is about eighteen percent. So, um, it's between twelve to eighteen percent. And we are about, from a turnover rate perspective, we are about twelve to fifteen. So we're kind of in the, in the range there. Three reasons why we have turnover is, um, and I'll give another example here. We hired, uh, information security officer. Some of our positions are in high demand. And getting those resources, uh, good resources in those places are very difficult for us with the compensation model we have in place. I'll give the example of information security officer. We were able to hire one of very talented information security officer, but two months into her job, her prior company countered our offer by a hundred K. And there was no way we could match that. So those are, that's one of the top most that we see. The other one we see is remote work. There are several organizations even today that offer a hundred percent remote work. And technology is one of those areas where you see the most remote work. I mean, it's among the top. So that's another reason. And the other one is because we are a transform, we are a department that's transforming, the demand for certain resources increases while, you know, through the transformational, um, process, we lose certain resources. So these are the top three reasons why we are seeing the turnover rate. And what has been done to address that? We have built partnership with the colleges, universities. We have hired interns who were brought in during the summer. And also we're partnering with organizations such as Society of Information Management and with NICO to, um, help us spread the word when we see that there are some key, um, positions that require experience. We have also worked, Precinct Four, thank you for that, and Power. We were able to bring in, um, the team member from Empower, who's, and we are building, bringing in additional team members from Empower. So those partnerships are helping us. We have been able to see a little bit of a change. I say a little bit because we still are in the process of looking for the talent. But we have been able to see a little bit of a change in terms of our hiring, our quality candidates as a result of those partnerships.
Thank you. I'll reserve the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Precinct Four. County Judges Office, you will now have eight minutes for questions.
First, I want to start off by thanking you Director Menon and the entire Universal Services team. You all have such a complex and large department to be in charge of, so thank you. First, uh, Universal Services has a twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven strategic plan. Could you highlight your top two to three strategic initiatives for the upcoming year? And how budget allocations may align with these goals?
That is a very difficult question because our, our, I have a list of projects and it spans about twenty-four of them. But to, to highlight, um, as, as I mentioned earlier, our primary focus is to make sure none of our systems go down. So disaster recovery, cybersecurity and the infrastructure, all of this together forms into one project. So data center stabilization is also another part of it. So that's one of the top priorities. I know I talked about four initiatives in one, but, uh, that is one of our top most priority. Because what we have observed is anytime system goes down, it has a significant impact on our customer base, including law enforcement and justice stakeholders. So our goal is to make sure our infrastructure has, uh, is stable and has a disaster plan built into it. The second top, um, second initiative I would bring up would be, um, we are embarking on the justice modernization and ERP modernization journey. we are embarking on the justice modernization and ERP modernization journey. So some of these modernization journey are, I mean, again, I can bring multiple projects into that modernization initiative, but that's the other one. Enhancing and modernizing would be the second aspect of those major projects, since you asked for two projects.
Thank you. I'm switching gears to one of your community-facing projects. The Digital Navigators Program has had a great community impact. Can you share data on how many residents you've helped thus far and what level of funding is allocated to expanding this program or maintaining the current level of service?
With the federal funding going away last year, it has been a challenge for us to maintain that program. The Digital Navigators are a part of our general fund, so we will continue to have them staffed. Our goal is to try our best to, to staff that, that program. Our partnership with your offices helps us get to the community and provide these services to the community through, through various engagements. And we are also, through the broadband task, task force that would be built, one of the, one of the items that they would be addressing is ongoing support and shaping up that program for us. So through that task force, you would see more of those conversations getting initiated. As of now, it's a part of our general fund. It is funded through the infrastructure that we have put in place. We have partnership with the public library, a very strong partnership with the public library, and we thank them for that. So those are going to help us keep the program alive for this year. And as the task force comes forward, we will be able to come and provide you a better idea on how to move that forward.
Thank you. And how is Universal Services balancing in-house expertise and experience versus vendor contracts? And how do these vendor contracts impact Universal Services financially?
So vendor contracts, we have two kinds of, three kinds of vendor contracts. So one is services contracts. Some of them, some of the vendor contracts helps us implement certain projects, and those are a part of the capital funding, we can capitalize those. Then we have staff augmentation, which is our keep-the-lights-on function. That hits, that is mostly the general fund-funded positions. And the third aspect is projects, as in, you know, the, the implementation of newer initiatives. Those are the three buckets in which we have the vendor contracts. The ones that are funded by the capital fund, we are not concerned so much about it. The funds, the funds, some of the offsets that we have put on table includes the contractor resources, and our goal is to make sure that there is full-time employees who can take over that staff-augmented tasks.
Thank you, I know we've spoken a little bit about the Innovation Lab. Can you highlight some of the work it does? And just given the budget constraints, we attempted to launch more generative AI features earlier this year and part of last year. Can you just speak to the constraints that you see in implementing the things that the Innovation Lab tries to do?
So our Innovation Lab has built very successful partnerships with various departments. We have brought in use cases, we are testing use cases. We have, we, our goal was to keep, because it's innovation, it's new technology, we tried to keep the general fund impact to the minimum last year, but the demand has increased. So right now, we just have one senior manager and an intern who has now become a full-time, and that's a successful story of one of the interns who came in and has become a AI developer for us. So with two resources, we are trying to sustain the operations of the Innovation Lab. The challenges that we are seeing is the demand for innovative technology, generative AI technology specifically, such as Copilot, has increased, but we don't have funds within our budget to support those rollouts. So there might be a need for us to come back to the code and ask for funding if we see that there is an increase in the demand for Copilot or any such technology.
Thank you, I'll reserve my time for now. Thank you, County Judge's Office. We will now cycle back for any remaining time. Precinct Two, you had twenty-two seconds remaining. I'm sorry, Precinct One, apologies.
Thank you, I just want to make sure. You mentioned that Copilot could result in savings. I was just wondering what the cost estimate you think that would be versus the estimated savings that would come from that for the, the more basic use cases, not getting into the more complex ones, which I know you all are still developing.
So cost savings is, so as soon as, initially to purchase Copilot, you will not see any cost saving because that's an initial investment. The savings comes over the year two, three, and four, and that savings could be, it could be significant. I don't have a number in front of me.
Thank you, Precinct One. Precinct Two, you had four minutes and twelve seconds remaining.
Okay, thanks so much. Director Menon, what are some core KPIs that your department is looking at for next fiscal year?
As I mentioned, we look at our general fund from three different angles, keep-the-lights-on. So we are looking at system availability, we are looking at our data center usage, we are looking at, I'll start on those three buckets, so the first bucket being keep-the-lights-on. And also, the help desk ticket, you know, response and resolution times. Those are the top ones for our keep-the-lights-on. And then moving the county forward includes the projects. So we want to make sure that the projects are delivered in a timely fashion and it is within the budget and meets the, the scope. So tracking those KPIs is helping us move the county forward. In terms of innovation, number of innovation projects that we intake and the number of innovation projects that we are able to deliver. Those are some of the key KPIs. These KPIs includes key projects, as in, you know, IGS transformation. Keeping the Lights On also includes the key systems such as our J-Web, CAD RMS, and infrastructure systems staying up and running. So we're building our network operation center, our data center initiatives, and our cybersecurity operation center. All of that is going to help us bring this to a much better position than we are today.
Thanks so much, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Precinct Two. Precinct Three, you had one minute and forty seconds remaining.
Really quickly, I'd imagine that a lift-and-shift approach isn't viable given the county's data retention policies and how big the repository is. Do you all have any concerns about shifting over to new technologies and making sure that all the data is still safe?
Concerns would not be the way I would say it. I would call there is a risk to that because we have, we know that, we have talked about J-Web extensively in the past in terms of the architecture that was used and also some of the key things that we need to figure out within that environment. So lift-and-shift for such systems is not a one-day job. It wouldn't require us to have thorough analysis of how the system was built, how was it structured before we move, and that applies to all the systems across the board, with exception to the newer system. We have invested in the last two years into enterprise architecture. One of the reasons why we have built that program within Universal Services is to avoid any, to learn more about our environment and also to avoid any issues or challenges that might come up as a result of the modernization journey that we might embark on.
Thank you, no further questions. If I have any time, I'll yield it to Precinct Four.
Thank you, Precinct Three. Then Precinct Four, you will have fifty-six seconds remaining.
Thank you. One final question, as it relates to the cost savings and adopting of the sixteen technology policies, can you share with us specifically how Universal Services has engaged our justice stakeholders and how they may be impacted by any of these policy, by these adopted policy changes, as well as any internal training with your IT teams on the sensitivity of the data and what that integration would look like?
Sure. I will use one of the policies, the change management policy, because that's kind of one of these policies, one of the major policies that will help us become stronger together. Change management policy, without going into too much techni, too much of technology, change management policy pretty much says that if you're changing anything in your side of the house, inform the side of the house so that things don't break. There is a handshake between the departments. Our justice stakeholders participate in our incident management, in our change management, change control board, where our changes are communicated across the board. Through the IJT C board that was stood up, we also communicate those changes within that board. And we receive some of the changes that they are making on their side of the house. So it's a maturing process where we are working close, we are working closely with our justice stakeholders to build that policy stronger. We also engage in providing them and a root cause analysis, the discussions around root cause analysis. All of this is a part of the change management policy and incident management policy. So there are steps being taken to make sure we are communicating, we are in partnership with them through various discussions. And also, in terms of training, we are in the process of designing those trainings and, but the policies are built where they have had an opportunity to review it, they've had an opportunity to provide their feedback. Not every feedback is taken, can be taken because, you know, ultimately, the policy needs to serve the county as a whole, not just one stakeholder. So we do take care of everyone's inputs to us.
Thank you very much, no thing further.
Thank you, Precinct Four. County Judge's Office, you had two minutes and one second remaining.
Director Menon, I know you and Universal Services like to plan ahead for anything that can come your way, but are there any major systems reaching their end of life that will require replacement or large capital investments in the upcoming year?
Some of the systems that, as I mentioned, I talked about J-Web quite a bit because we are embarking on that modernization journey. And we are in lock steps with our justice stakeholders, thanks to the help from our IGS director. So we are pushing that initiative forward. Our CAD RMS is another one of those environment where we are working very closely with our law enforcement stakeholders to ensure that the CAD functioning, you know, there is, there are those stabilization and modernization efforts in place. ERP is another one of those systems. As you know, PeopleSoft has announced, I mean, Oracle has announced the sunset of PeopleSoft, so we are trying to be on, ahead of that game and try to embark on that journey. There are some other systems such as e-permits where we are in discussions with engineering on, you know, what, I mean, our team works on constant modifications of those systems. Three, 3-1-1 is not a modernization journey, but that's more of a project that will continue until we have got all the departments within that fold. A couple of other projects that come to mind is our data center disaster recovery initiatives that we have embarked on, where not only our primary data center, we are also looking at building the backups in, in both multi-cloud strategies, so in cloud as well as on-prem, depending upon the system and the sensitivity of the data. So those, those are some of the projects that are in motion, specifically around the, the items that concern general fund.
No additional questions, thank you.
Thank you, County Judge's Office. And Director, since you had utilized your closing remarks, time for your introductory presentation. With that, we want to thank you and the entire Universal Services Department for your participation.
Thank you for your time, and I would like to say a shout-out to my team at Universal Services for all the great work they do. We had a very busy year and they made it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Our next presentation will be from the Public Health Services Department.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Health Services Department. Our next presentation will come from Director Leah Barton, and might I say, congratulations, to review the format. Director, you will have three minutes for introductory presentation. Then each court office will be allocated eight minutes for questions, beginning with Commissioner Garcia. And then you will have two minutes for closing remarks. And so when you're ready, Director.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm glad to have had a little bit more time to prepare this year than last year. And, but some of our story is very similar. Last year, we were facing significant headwinds, and those have only been exacerbated this year. We're facing anticipated roll-offs in COVID grants, ARPA funding, and some unanticipated roll-offs of state grants and, and other funding, as well as just uncertainty in our funding picture more broadly. A reminder that about a third of our funding comes from the general fund. That's our most steadfast and our most flexible funding. Two-thirds of our funding comes from grants and special revenue. We're seeing about a twenty million, twenty-one million dollar reduction in grant funding year-over-year. Again, that was anticipated, but it also results in significant impact to our community. And we've done our best to increase our use of special revenue, adjusting our environmental public health fees, expanding our use of charity care, getting more case managers, social workers qualified to use charity care. But as we look at the year-over-year picture, last year's adopted budget was fifty-nine point nine million dollars in the general fund. We were asked to take on and very happy to take on one and a half million dollars in pay equity adjustments through the twenty-five-hundred-dollar raise, the twenty-dollar minimum wage, and the transfer of the Domestic Violence Assistance Fund into public health. We have some known inflation, contractual inflation in our leases and our benefits, but we also know that we'll see probably about another million dollars but we also know that we'll see probably about another million dollars in inflation in our nonlabor. Medical supplies, pet food only gets more expensive year-over-year. We have received $3.6 million in suggested offsets from OMB, and have categorized those as roughly a third with resident impact, roughly a third with internal impact to our administrative services and our own team, and roughly a third with quite limited impact that were much easier to take. And I'll emphasize that we have worked really hard to identify internal efficiencies, such as bringing the heart program in-house, bringing our Medicaid billing in-house, bringing our document retention in-house, and finding other ways to, to self-fund this work. You can see detail of those offsets on the second page. The elements with the most critical impacts to, to residents would be changes to our health prevention and coordinated care team, mosquito and vector control education, public health preparedness and response, and community health and wellness medical supplies. We are, are willing to work a little harder on our administrative teams, although, of course, that has internal impact as well. Yep. And we have a short portfolio of targeted enhancements. We've looked really hard at the grant programs that are rolling off, and we feel it's most critical to preserve core capabilities, so that if money becomes available, we're able to expand again, we're able to consider these in next year's budget process. And those four programs are maternal and child health, chronic disease prevention, wastewater surveillance, and neighborhood nuisance abatement. Open to questions.
Thank you, Director. Each court office will now have eight minutes for questions, beginning with Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. Good morning, Director, and congratulations. I haven't had the chance to personally congratulate you on, on, on your new role. I know you will do well. You've been phenomenal thus far, so congratulations. Public health is something that has always been important to me. As I often tell people, I'm a, I'm a public health baby. Got my teeth worked on and shots and all that good stuff, so have a great degree of respect for the men and women that work in your department. With that being said, the most significant impact to your budget is really coming from the federal government. Is that an accurate statement?
In, in terms of the loss of our ARPA funding, as well as our health and human services COVID grants?
Yes. And so as we look towards the future with those respective impacts, are there any strategies that you're contemplating outside of the general fund that may be opportunities for, for us to replace those with the resources that you need to continue that particular work?
Yeah. There, there's no source that rivals the, the size and power of the federal government. However, we are working very closely with the Grants and Partnerships Team within OCA to look for philanthropic opportunities for funding. Our environmental public health team is looking at potential partnerships with management districts, TERZes, to help support neighborhood nuisance activities. We're, our CFO, Robert Brandon, has, and his team have done a great job at, together with Dr. Brown, in optimizing our, our fee-for-service activity, medical billing. Again, that, that work to get more people certified to be eligible for Medicaid and charity care reimbursement is ongoing, but that's, that's not going to reach the level that the federal government could provide.
Yeah. So I know, I, I know your, your entire leadership team is very innovative and creative, but I would just encourage an early start on how to force multiply via collaborations with other nonprofits and things of that nature, specifically to the, the core work that those federal grants were, were impacting. With that, with that being said, in terms of your, the offset that you've identified, from what I can see, they're coming from across divisions within your department. So how confident are you that this approach will protect your, number one, your workforce, will help preserve, if not enhance, morale, and positions the, that the department will need to continue to be able to deliver a degree of high-quality service to the residents of Harris County?
Yeah. We've identified these offsets with a goal of minimizing impact on, first and foremost, Harris County residents and also our staff. We have over 400, over 500 employees in the general fund right now. We do see 18 positions impacted using this set of offsets. There will be impact, right? Particularly if these resident-facing components, health prevention, coordinated care, mosquito, vector, public health preparedness, response, community health and wellness, wind up in, in the final budget. But, but we've, we've worked really hard to identify efficiencies and, and choose offsets that would, would minimize impact.
Good deal. And I'll speak for my office, and if there's any way that, I know that my office is looking at sustaining some of the nuisance abatement that ARPA was providing, because it's just been so, so impactful. So we're looking at doing that. But if there's other ways that our, at least my office can collaborate with you, please let us know, and, and, you know, we have the community health workers program in the office, so any ways that we can share resources to help you and your staff continue their work as we all transition through this new reality of reduced federal funding to, to our community. Lastly, with you stepping into this role, what are your three top priorities that you will see going forward to help demonstrate to the public, as the old saying goes, there's a new sheriff in town? And, and so, but, but with a, with the idea of the possibility of, of, you know, regardless of where we're at, I, I always tell my team, you know, there are things we can do better, and, and money doesn't necessarily drive all improvements. So in spite of the impact that we're all facing, what, what do you foresee as your top three priorities with the possibility of even being able to take some things a notch up?
Yeah. So there may be a new sheriff, but we have the same leadership team. We have a tremendous leadership team over here, experts in their fields, and we're continuing on our mission to expand access to care, and that'll happen through your East Harris County hub, the Riverside Hospital renovation. And so we're trying to bring that, bring mobile health into areas that have not as, not as much access, make it easier for people to get the care they need. We're continuing our partnership with law enforcement, expanding the heart alternative response program across all five show office districts. And then we're continuing to really upgrade our systems, upgrade our processes. EPIC will be a focus this year. We need Harris Health's partnership on that, and make sure that our technology infrastructure is, is keeping up with the times. At the same time, we're, of course, focused on diversifying our revenue sources, preparing for FIFA, there are public health impacts of FIFA. And then, you know, in our role as public health strategist, delivering resources to the community, like the Leading Causes of Death Report, our Healthy Communities Dashboard, our Access to Care Report, so that we can work together more effectively, as you described.
Good deal. And actually, you, you sparked the thought. We have struggled with Access Harris. And, and I'm, Mr. Ramos, how much do we have budgeted for Access Harris?
Commissioner, I'm gonna need a follow-up on the exact number. I know that we had, we had 4 million in terms of capital costs, which were transferring out of ARPA into CIP, but in terms of operating, do you have that, Leah?
So with, within the, the Health Prevention and Coordinated Care Division, which now also includes chronic disease prevention and the HCPH Connect benefits eligibility program, we see a lot of synergies across those programs. The, the proposed budget for that division is, give me 30 seconds here. Why is it the only one I'm not seeing?
As you, as you look through it?
No, it's 3.7 million in the general fund.
As, as you look at that, I, I know that really, at the end of the day, the major output was a degree of data collection. And, and from my conversations with Dr. Porsha and Wayne, now that we're all interconnected with EPIC, and that's what sparked my thought, the question becomes if there is a need to approach Access Harris differently, that may be less cash-intensive. So I would just ask you to contemplate that and see if that becomes an opportunity. If not, you have it budgeted, and we'll continue to move forward. But again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Precinct three, you will now have eight minutes for questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations again, Leah, in your appointment. And as I've said before, you're, you and your departments, the best county department that I've worked with, so you'll do a great job. To piggyback on Commissioner Garcia's comment on neighborhood nuisance abatement, the constituents in precinct three love that program. It's a program where the constituents, constituents immediately see results when you clean a lot up, you demolish a building. In the budget process, or, or do you foresee any more funding opportunities for that department, or is it primarily going to be grant-based?
Yeah. So the Environmental Public Health Division has always had a small amount of HUD funding supporting double-digit 12, 15 abatements per year. We were able to dramatically expand that under ARPA. ARPA funding has enabled, you know, over 1,000 violations to be abated. This year will abate, you know, over 400.